Okay, good evening and welcome to the Powell Elementary School Board Director's Meeting for Wednesday, May 15th. We will start with our opening, the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, next would be our public comments. Okay, I see no public comments. Okay, we also have on here the Code of Ethics. Did we have a copy? Catherine, did you happen to bring a clean copy for us to sign?
Actually, I, my recollection is that it was going to go to the Board Chairs Meeting for discussion of Jim's rewrite and the School Boards Association Code of Ethics. But let me see if she put one on here. But that was my recollection, so...
Okay, it's gonna be under the Board Chairs.
And the Board Chairs did not get to it on their agenda the last week, so this will happen.
Okay.
So I think that's where it's going to land.
Well, we'll put it on hold again.
To the Board Chairs.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, is, uh, any personnel? Well, um, let's move down to our, well, you know what? If the Board doesn't mind, we actually have, every year we ask Rich to come with his wish list, and if the Board doesn't mind, maybe we will take Rich before we continue on with the action wishes. Is that all right?
Fine.
In front of you, you...
Okay. What am I gonna talk about tonight? Our, uh, our plans for our 2014 budget, our capital improvements. I'll hand, I've got some handouts here, if you don't mind.
Yes, thank you.
Can you keep one for Angie?
We've got a pile going for her over here.
I just gave it, we'll get down there in case she, like, if she comes in.
Where'd the pile go?
Yeah.
Okay, the first item I'd like to talk about is, uh, we need to, uh, take part of this room behind us, the computer lab, which is room 221, and make a conference room, or a small meeting area. The room would be about eighteen by eight, it would accommodate one person, but it's a place where a counselor could bring a child in, we could do some testing there, it's a kind of a private space. So in order to do that, um, we're gonna need three interior doors, and the reason for that is for the egress, our fire exits. So the main, the main entrance to that room would be through the mailroom, which is over here in the corner, and then, uh, there'd be a secondary door inside there, plus we need to add the third door for security for the computer lab. So basically, we're gonna go parallel to the wall here, eighteen feet in the room, eight feet wide. And what I recommended or requested was that we would do it in a fire-rated vinyl-coated sheet rock that's really a modular, a panel, so that if we decided in the future we wanted to change the configuration, we could do it without taking screws and nails and everything else out of it. So it's a permanent thing, but could be used again. Um, the other, the other advantage of that is, uh, because of the computer equipment in there, we wouldn't need to, to sand the sheet rock, the dust, the dirt, the painting, so it's worth that little extra to do that. But in order to do that, we're gonna have to do some electrical. Obviously, you're gonna have to put some more electrical outlets along the new wall. We need to add some fire detection and the motion sensor, a beacon in the room, just small items. And I've talked with the electrician, and I've estimated at the high, that, that number that you see there's probably not gonna be that high. So overall, that, one thing's probably gonna be about ninety-five hundred dollars. Okay? Any questions on how we're doing it, or...
Everybody following him? Any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Has this been professionally designed by an architect, or...
Uh, I've had an engineer, uh, Jim Seacor has been in, you know, we've talked, talked to Labor, Labor Department about the egress, also the fire beacon. Yeah, it's been, it's been approved, engineer-approved.
Yeah, Jim Seacor is very good, he's, he does all our work.
And just something that you brought up, that Todd brought up months and months ago, was I thought we were gonna rearrange that whole section out there, his office, Mrs. O'Neal's office, uh...
Oh, we'll get to that.
Yeah.
For safety, you mean?
No, no, just, just the whole...
The whole configuration.
Area there to reconfigure it all.
We had, we had talked about that, but I do think that this is the best option. We do need to have, uh, you know, a, a room to where it, sometimes we need to have, of course, IEP meetings and that, that are confidential, and, you know, currently we have the counselor's office, we have others, other areas that just aren't really conducive to inviting a, a family in for a meeting, and when we take a look at the configuration of the office area now, um, you know, it, it's, it's, it's okay the way it is, but where do we go from there? And the, the computer room is so much more larger than really is needed at this time, so we wanted to use just a portion of that room, and I think it's gonna work out great.
If you're happy, I'm happy.
Okay, go ahead.
The second thing we're going to do, we're going to finish, uh, the smart board installations, which would mean every classroom would have a, a smart board in their room, and actually there's eight classrooms that would happen. If you remember, last year we did an electrical upgrade, where we put in some new service panels, so this is kind of the second phase. It was costly last year, I believe it was like eighty-five hundred dollars to complete that, that portion of it. This won't be nearly as much, because we've got the sub panels in, the transformer, but we will have to run outlets to the rooms to support the, uh, the smart boards. And again, I believe that estimate's very high, I believe, I'm hoping we can do it for half of that amount. A lot, a lot of, depends on where the location of the smart boards will be in the room. Okay, the next item are windows and doors. We started this project about nine years ago, and we've been slowly plugging away with a window at a time. Last year we actually did, uh, two windows and doors in the classroom, but at the rate that we're going, it'll be eight more years before we, we complete it. So I've kinda suggested that we take a big step forward and do five, the five remaining classrooms, okay? And they'd be at the lower level here, on the, uh, east, eastern, south side. So that cost is around fifty-two hundred dollars a classroom, that total being around twenty-six thousand dollars.
Does that complete the bottom?
What's that?
Does that complete the bottom floor?
That will complete all the classrooms. The only ones that will be left would be, uh, the double doors and two single doors.
Okay.
Okay. And I've got a, a four-year plan laid out that I'll present to the Board at some time.
Okay.
Question?
Yes.
Has anybody done an estimate on the electrical and heat savings from doing all this that we can brag about?
We've had an electrical audit several years ago now, I think it's been five years.
That's why I was putting the windows in, we're gonna be saving heat, right?
Oh, definitely, yes.
Those windows are forty years old, so you can imagine that they're single-pane, steel-framed.
So do we have some way of estimating that, so we can actually say that we're saving money? It's a good thing to know.
We probably could calculate it. There was a time when we, when we did the roof, when we put the extra insulation, and I tried to calculate the savings based, based on heating. Um, let me look into it, I'll see if I can somehow calculate it, or at least start, you know, look at last year's heat degree days and figure out. I mean, it'd be nice to be solar, I'd like to think that at some point, we'll go solar at some point, but...
This is, this is...
Okay, uh, we just received the, if you remember, all the schools went through a, uh, security and, uh, audit with a team from SVSU. We just got the results back, the rough draft this week. But one of the things that I, that I proposed, at least a year ago, was securing the front area. You know, right now we have cameras throughout the building, outside the building, uh, so my proposal is that we put some kind of entry system here. I know that the Board had discussed about an additional interior door, which is probably gonna be part of this, okay? So in other words, and that was a suggestion out of the, the audit, was that we need a containment area. In other words, once we allow people into the building, we need to be able to contain them, so that they don't have free rein. Right now, once a person enters this building, they can go down any hallway and, and be inside, so I've looked at that, in fact, I just got some information today, I think I emailed you, you probably haven't had a chance to see it, but, uh, we're talking about an audiovisual intercom keypad on the outside, so that the person would wanna acknowledge or enter the building, or press a button, the receptionist could look and see who it is, speak to him, and buzz him through the door. Okay? So our next proposal, do you have a question? No, Cindy, you looked at it.
No.
And I know this is all new information.
Yeah, I'll wait till you finish.
Yeah. Initially, we talked about using the camera system that we have, and trying to, this is a standalone system, has its own monitor at the reception area, she can see, she can communicate, so I'm pursuing that, I just got the information, in fact, just got the email earlier today. Um, the other thing that we're, we're probably gonna do is put a double set of doors at the end of the office space, in that hallway, that would be a containment. That'll also be a, a buzz-through, but I'm thinking through this, uh, the school hours, we'll probably open them up so that the children have free access through there, so it won't be a restriction, but we'll have to look at that. Okay? I don't know if I want all glass, I first got a quote for all glass, and I don't know if that's the right thing to let the people in and then have full exposure to everyone.
Well, as far as, I know some members of the Board had talked about, once you enter the building, is putting another doorway at the end here. Todd, actually, you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Sure. Um, you know, I do, I do believe that we should increase the security at the front entrance, um, to where we would have this buzz-in system and, um, you know, allow visitors to enter and, of course, exit at, um, the discretion of the staff here. Any further doors to our building at this point, um, I mean, this is just my philosophy of entering a, a friendly school, as you enter, we wanna keep it the way it is right now.
Right.
Um, you know, I, I do believe that we need to add the buzzer system at the, at the front entrance, and then leaving it to us to, um, you know, allow visitors to, to enter and leave, but any additional doors, I, I believe it would take away from the way we...
The welcoming feeling?
Yeah.
Right, right. I'd, I'd like to know how the Board feels about that. I kinda agree with Todd.
I do, too.
Um, I know Shasberry locks their door during the day, and it does not get opened until three. There is a buzzer, you can buzz in, but, um, Angie, there's a seat over here next to Catherine. Um, I'm just not, I personally don't like it, putting the second, I'm sorry, putting the second door or wall up here, and I think it would be, it would be less expensive, and still would be secured, is to change the front door with a secured, with a swipe, is that what you would call them, a swipe system?
A containment area really would look like that.
Yes.
And I don't believe that, um, even putting the doors here at the end, you know, they could still have access if they wanted to, once they're in the building, to come into the office area and then through the school.
Through the school.
So you're really not deterring someone from getting in any further if they wanted to, if we put doors here at the end. So, you know, I, I, like I said, I do believe that the front entrance and the front doors should be secure, and after that, um, it, it really wouldn't benefit the school a whole lot to have other doors here at the end, because they could enter through the mailroom and through the office area. And a containment area would look just like that, a containment area, and I'm not sure that, um, as a school, um, we wanna go that way.
That's the look you're going for.
Yeah.
What, what about the first, the first door being open, and the second door that's the buzzer, once, once they're into the office area, okay, then they're just buzzed into the building, the, the second door being the buzzer door.
But where would you, where would the second door be?
Just, just past, uh, Mrs. Martell's window.
Yeah, see, and then, if it's past that, then they can still get through the office area.
Oh, 'cause there are doors there, yeah.
Right, right.
There's still a, a way to get through, and...
Well, the only comment is that it's, that we have some professional lay it out, and...
Oh, definitely, yes, it's, you know, again, probably Seacor would, um...
And, and the other pro-comment I'd have on double, on two sets of doors, and they could be further out, is for heat. This heat, this heat bill for this building is staggering, this blows my mind, but when the doors are open, that's just the chimney for heat going out, and, and most, most office-type building have a, a double set of doors, some sort of double set of doors, so that keeps the cold air, you know, out, out and the hot air in, you know, whether it's security or not security, just, just a, a way to, to make sure the heat stays in the building.
Okay.
And that would maybe help pay for the whole thing.
Did you hear me?
Maybe what we need to do is look at the rough draft audit and discuss it, but as far as I think we'll go forward on the, the buzz system or intercom system, as far as the doors, we can talk about it, about it a later time, or look at the report and see what the recommendations are and what makes sense.
But shouldn't you have the doors first before the buzz?
Well, that, I think that's all one unit, to be truthful, yeah.
Has anybody ever made the suggestion of enclosing the, when you first walk in, you have the overhang, enclosing that and making that a door, and then have that space, and then the door that you walk through now as the secondary door?
It's a great idea.
And that would be the buzz-in?
She's talking about alcohol, remember we spoke about that one time.
That would solve a lot of problems, both Todd's problem and the heat problem.
Then you wouldn't have to do anything with, inside the building, just, you know, I'm sure they could cement that up and put a window in, and then put the doors in the front, and have that the entranceway, and then the second door, which is the original doors that we use now as the entrance, use that as the secondary and buzz it through there.
I second that motion.
Well, I don't know if that was a motion, I was just asking.
I'm trying to picture this.
Hasn't anybody thought about that?
Uh, I'm gonna pretend that I'm a parent, all right? And, and with that suggestion, I can almost see a door being open to that L- okay, or whatever you wanna call it, coming in and standing there, and then buzzing into the real door that comes into the building.
Correct.
But having that first door, and close that, that overhang, but we...
The first door unlocked.
The first door unlocked, but come in and do a security door...
Yes.
With the card sweep.
Yes.
That's what I would see.
And there's enough room there that you could put pictures on both sides for parents to see, or whatever.
That solves the heat problem, yes, I was just gonna say.
What do you think of that, Todd? Do you think that would work?
In other words, instead of a key to get in?
We'd police walk around and watch the car.
Yeah, it's been discussed before. And I think it would be an easy fix.
No, just the, the faculty staff.
Oh, so if a parent came...
That, that's what we were talking about anyways, as far as the security door went.
That way they're not in the cold or anything, they're under, they're not on the weather or anything like that.
They share that extra heat block, you know, the heat escape block.
Is that, um, how's the Board feel about that?
And if you put a window in, you would be able to see it from your office as well as, um, Linda's office.
Hmm.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah. Could you make it bigger? Could you extend the roof a couple...
I don't think it has to be bigger, I think it's the perfect size.
It is the perfect size, yeah.
It's a foyer, that's all it is.
Yeah, it's a foyer.
It's a foyer, and the purpose of the foyer is to, is to contain the heat.
But could we get some quotes and, and something on that?
I mean, I think it would be just cementing it while putting the brick, and then the window. I would think a window, you'd want the whole length of it, so you can see into it, and then the doors in the front. You don't have to put a roof on or nothing, it's already done.
Yeah, it's there.
Already there.
And that would actually, um, go along with the, uh, report that came in for the security. How do you think, are you okay with that?
No, I would be, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
The last thing I'd like to say is, the generator's back online.
I heard.
The new engine came last week, they did a load test last night, everything appears to be fine. And it was a new engine, not a rebuilt engine, so we're back online.
Great, great. Thank you to you and to Mr. Hutchins. He's really been a big, big help to getting that done, thank you. Excellent. Okay, if you would take a minute and take a look at, uh, the, two pages were sent out, um, the reserve account, and you also have the Oak Hill building expenses. All right. Let's do the Oak Hill building expenses first. Everybody got there? All right. Anything you see with a star, we sent, we paid back to, uh, the, the account, we needed that money was spent out before we sold the building. We, we had to do all of this before we were able to sell the building. And, um, even the boring, the soil samples, the bottom line is, after we paid back what it cost us to get up to the sale, we have, the bottom line is, we have fifty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents, that we need to, um, a motion to move that amount of money from the Oak Hill Reserve to general fund to offset the direct sale-related expenses. Just the five, the five, no, five thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars needs a motion to move it. That's what we, we had to pay out in order to, uh...
From Oak Hill to the general fund.
The general fund, to offset our direct sale.
Second.
The motion was made, and second, is there any questions on that?
Angie made it.
Angie, and then Jim seconded it. Okay, the fifty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-seven, um, that is going to go into our reserve account, and I will explain that, that we wanna save that amount of money for future expenses. Now, if you look at the reserve account, at the current time, we have seventy-one thousand three hundred, and FY thirteen, twenty thousand goes into it, FY fourteen, another twenty goes into it. FY fourteen is the capital improvement that we do every year, that's thirty thousand. Then we have, um, a total of anticipate money available, a hundred and forty-one thousand. Now, the anticipated spending, the, these are the items that we just heard Rich talk about, the conference room and relocation of the computers, install smart, smart boards and electrical upgrade, the remaining windows and doors for the lower classrooms, security camera and card sweep, and a new security door inside or front. Well, we just decided we're gonna do that, bringing a total of sixty-one thousand two fifty. That still leaves us around eighty thousand that can be saved for, um, spending in the future, not counting our fifty-nine thousand that we had for the sale of Oak Hill. So it looks like we're in pretty good shape. We do have a buffer, in case, I know it possibly might go over for our, our, if we enclose that foyer, but we're pretty, we're pretty well set on, uh, where's my paper?
Anticipated spending, could we add a new, um, system for downstairs in the gym?
Amen.
That is, that is another thing that we, yeah, we're trying, I'm trying, very hard to get ahold of. Did you get ahold of, um...
No, but I will stop and see him at work.
I've emailed him?
I'm sorry, I've been extremely busy, but I will go into him.
I've emailed him, I've called him, but I think he'd be the best one to contact to. Yeah, we do wanna put in a PA system, that's...
And also, I think that if we got some, um, boards that go on the back wall, maybe on the sidewall for sound...
Sound.
Would help tremendously, like what they have at the middle school.
We, we have...
Padded boards.
Is that what we have up there now, Rich?
We have that at the middle school.
Okay. So, so what we have downstairs, Rich, is different what the middle school has up?
Do we have, do we have...
For sound buffers?
Downstairs?
Oh, what?
Padded. Do we have padded panels downstairs in, on the walls?
Yes, on, on the, behind the back porch, is that what you're saying?
But not on the side walls?
No, on the side of the walls.
They're not on the walls or anything.
There's some...
No, not on, not on the exterior wall, or the interior walls, you can't on this side because of the cafeteria tables.
Right, but, I mean, some walls, it would help tremendously if they were on the walls, don't you think?
Am I, am I?
The acoustical in that room is terrible.
Yeah.
So we need to look for something we can put up, uh, uh, in addition to what's up there.
Right, we tried some sound.
I know there's, the exterior wall is, there's cardboard or...
I didn't realize there was sound.
Yeah, there's some up there.
Okay.
Yeah, but maybe we can ask the engineer to, yes, Jim?
Yeah, my suggestion again is to pay a few thousand dollars for a professional to look at the room and...
Yeah, we did at one point.
Yeah, for acoustics, for, yeah, okay.
Yes, yes. But, yeah, that is something. My only suggestion, and I'm hoping the Board goes along with that, is the fifty-nine thousand, I don't wanna blow through it, this is a one-time deal, I know in the future we're gonna need a new roof, and the, I believe it's the new se, the old section.
The old section.
So I don't wanna get caught short, I would rather spend a little bit, the, the doors and windows are important, I mean, everything he's got on here is very important, it's, nothing's a waste, um, it's for energy, so if the Board has any suggestions?
How do we protect it from ourselves?
What do you mean?
Because we could have a whim here and say, "Let's, let's buy an air balloon," all in favor, and how do we protect that money from ourselves?
Because the, it cannot be spent, it's put into a reserve account, it cannot be spent unless it has the approval of this Board.
The whole Board?
Yes, the whole Board, absolutely.
We, we can't be forced, but, there's no way it can, it can be spent on something else?
No, not unless we have, it's, we, they have our approval.
That's a statute type of thing?
Absolutely, and I'll tell you why. The, um, the voting of the, the, the people voted us to allow us to sell Oak Hill, okay? And the only way they allowed us to sell it is if we use the money to fix the building up.
Oh, right.
Okay? So if we spend it any, any other way, then we're going against the, the voters of the town.
Excellent.
So, yes, it's kind of a safe thing. Okay, is there any questions? So, um, I think I would like, um, a vote from the Board to, um, accept this anticipated spending that let Rich, um, go ahead and do all these things that we've lined up, and this will probably be done during the summer of 2013, is that correct?
You wanna vote for the anticipation? So moved.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
You second it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, is there any, um...
One question.
Yes.
This is new money, this is, this is, all this is new money.
This is, this is what we have in there currently.
No, the sixty-one thousand dollars is not in the budget now.
Yes.
No, it's not.
Well, that's, that's... Thirty thousand dollars is the capital improvement money.
No, I'm not saying with the money we're spending.
Yes.
We haven't budgeted to spend this yet.
No.
It's the first time we're saying spend this.
Yes, this is the first time, yes.
Like, there's a budget for the smart board, boards.
Right.
Okay, fine.
Okay?
Fine.
All right, very good. So all those in favor signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. All right, very good, Rich.
Have fun.
Yes.
I'll be busy.
Okay, next on the agenda is the financial, the Treasurers Report. There are no budget transfers, are there any questions on the Treasurers Report? I don't see none, I'll go down. Do you have any?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah. Uh, I'd like, uh, I'd like the Board somehow to notify, uh, our CFO that, that these reports, the type size...
Oh, wait a minute, you're in, you're in the consent agenda.
Yeah.
The question was the Treasurers Report.
Oh, that's fine.
That's fine, all right.
Oh, that's fine.
So let's move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Wait a minute.
You may define this.
And you have a revised consent agenda?
You can blow it up on the computer.
Wait a minute, you're on the consent agenda. Okay, I need a motion first.
So moved.
All right.
So moved, second. So moved, second.
Second? Angie and Jim. All right, we have a revised consent agenda.
Do I have to make a motion on that as well?
Well, I just, it's gonna be included.
So moved.
Okay, let me just put that in there. And I think I passed it out, right, Catherine?
Yeah, we did.
We did. All right, yeah, here it is. It's amendment to the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Did you get yours either?
Yeah, she has, she has.
Or maybe you didn't get one, Jim, like Todd. All right, so the motion's been made and seconded to include the amended consent agenda. Okay? Okay, now, all right, let's look at the amended consent agenda. This is a request from our, from Jessica Hoyt Rabidou. She would like an extension approved by us. She had a baby last year. She really would like to take September and October off and come back in November. And we have a substitute right now. And we would just keep her on. Is that correct, Alfred?
I'm not sure if she would be available. I mean, we would have to present that to her. But we would try to definitely fill the position for those two months.
For the two months. Okay, that would be the amended consent agenda. Questions on the consent agenda? Now you?
Okay. On a regular basis, the financial office, okay, gives us these reports that are in six-point type. And a lot of states, that's against the law. Okay.
You're asking for a larger?
Yeah, and I went over this, and Jim, during the budget process, I went through it. And it's just a bunch of simple tricks of eliminating the cents, eliminating the dollar signs, wrapping the titles, changing the margins. You can get this up to twelve, twelve-point type.
They also could put it on an eight by fourteen, eight by seventeen.
No, it's not necessary. You could do it on eight and a half by 11. And so I would just like the board to insist upon it. I know it can be done. And I've shown, I've shown Jim Kosis how to do it. It's just simple Excel corrections. And you gotta get it right up to 12. If you look at just the margins between the columns, if you eliminate the decimal points, which we don't need, eliminate the dollar signs, which we don't need, and this thing, this thing blows up to 12 points.
Make it larger print.
Yeah, because you find yourself not reading it because it's too hard to read.
Now, is that the program that he runs, Catherine, can it handle that? I mean...
I, I, you know, it comes out of our budget sense. I think what, what Jim is saying is, you know, if it were in a simple Excel, it would be easy to change around. I would argue that we'd wanna keep some dollar signs and decimal points, but I still think we can make it larger. You know, so I think if you just ask them to make it in a larger format, you'd like to keep the eight and a half by 11, but in a larger format, let them figure out how to do it.
If you look at the, at the column, just on the revenue reports for the board, you know, the encumbrance detail by, by encumbrance, that, that takes up a whole over an inch of space in the little zeros.
Yeah, for revenue, they could actually eliminate that column. That's true. They can hide that column perhaps.
Yeah. But throughout the report, it's, it's... But the six, the six-point, the six-point type is, is, is an accountant's tactic for...
Well, we can actually ask.
For people not reading it.
Well, I think, you know, what's interesting is that the budget sense software that we use is used in many, many different places. But I think you're right. It can be, it could be adjusted.
Well, I have adjusted it. I, I know it's in...
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So that's, that is possibly a simple fix. It's a sensible request. Is there any other questions on any other part of the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we have no policies. Okay, oh, I see. We moved Rich up. That was, I didn't even see that on there. That was good. Okay, any old business? Do we have any old business?
I don't think we do.
No?
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
The Red Cross contract, Kathy?
Yes, I was gonna, is that the old business that we're on?
I think it is, yeah.
Yes, I wanted to mention. The chief financial officer has it to review. And he has, no, I had a chance to do that, but that's where it sits right now. But I think we should put it on the agenda for June. Yeah, absolutely. I was gonna try to get it on this agenda, but we weren't able to do that.
And we'll put the code of ethics on for June also.
What else for Jim?
The code of ethics, we'll put on for June.
Oh, okay.
And that brings us down to our principals' report.
I didn't prepare an actual report for tonight, but, you know, our next school board meeting will be June 20th, and that'll be our last day of school. And we have a lot of activities between now and then that we'll have in our newsletter and...
And what, what day did you say the graduation was?
Graduation is, we have it down for June 17th. It's a Monday, and that'll be at 6:30.
June 17th. At 6:30? Okay, because I know one of the things, being chair of the panel board, I get to hand out the diploma.
Very nice.
So you and I'll be on stage.
Okay.
And don't push me off. Okay, very good. All right.
What day is the graduation?
Graduation is June 17th at 6:30. And our next board meeting is the 20th.
Are we on the third Wednesdays? That's what we settled on?
Actually, it's not the 20th, it's the 19th. Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say.
That's right, because we're on Wednesdays.
Wednesdays, yes. At 5:30, the 19th. Okay. All right, I really don't have anything to report either, other than I reported on the... What happened was Jim Kosis, myself and Rich and Todd sat down for a couple hours and ran through what, what Rich was trying to make a list for our summer projects. And Jim Kosis was very helpful for us.
He's attending the New England Association of Business Administrators Conference with Rick.
Right, yeah.
So it's a great opportunity for him.
Yes, it is. So that's why he's not with us tonight. Otherwise, he would be. But he worked on many hours trying to help me understand what I was gonna present to the board tonight. So, thank you, Jim. I appreciate that. Okay, so let's go down to the superintendent's report.
Just like to let you know that the Personnel Committee of the SBSU Board is meeting tomorrow at the central office, at the Supervisory Union offices at 5:30. And we're looking at a number of job descriptions. And also, I'll be explaining our different use of positions entitled tutor. Right now, we use them in three different ways. We use tutors for students that may have a medical need where they're homebound and they need some homebound tutoring, or students who have an alternate disciplinary matter for expulsion. And then we also use tutors as temporary positions before we are able to get to the board to have them approve and authorize new positions of paraprofessionals. We have a number of uses. And through the last couple of months, I've realized that the board members really don't see these positions because they're not permanent positions and they don't come before the board. And so I thought it was important that I at least inform during the Personnel Committee those board members. I also reviewed it at the board chairs meeting, at their last meeting. And I think that the board chairs were quite supportive that I do a quarterly report on the hours by type of what tutors are used, so board members can see what the expense is and how many hours are actually used. So I think that will be very helpful. We also, at the board chairs meeting, talked about an anticipated, anticipated deficit spending because of special education needs. And I would say that their choice was predominantly to start to share a report on this as we get toward the end of the year, so at your June meeting, so that you'll be aware of where the SU, the expenditures in special ed are and what the impact might be on your own go-backs. So we'll be doing that at the June meeting, too, Cindy.
That's good.
Yeah, I think it is good. Other than that, I, I don't know that students would be disappointed to learn that I'm announcing the last day of school. But the last day of school is June 20th, and it is a half-day.
All right, very good. Now, I'm sure there won't be, wouldn't be too many children crying over that.
Probably not.
Okay, now, we actually included that, what you passed out for the hot air balloon. That was in the agenda. That was passed out.
Additional for that assembly.
There is a budget status report. Any questions on that? Is there any other business to come before the board? Enclosed for FYI is the student enrollment for May. And the Vermont Agency of Education is the AYP release. That's enclosed. Our next move would be to move into an executive session for contract negotiations.
Do you also have a personnel item for evaluations for when we're finished?
Or?
Personnel item for evaluations.
That's what we're going with.
So you need contract negotiations and personnel matter, evaluation.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, motion been made and seconded, Jim and Angie. Okay, so we're all in favor. I wanna thank you very much. Thank you, Todd. You're doing a marvelous job.
Oh, thank you.
Get a lot of smiles when I come into the building. Okay.
Paul's well.
Thank you. So we're all set.